We would like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. And we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So I would like to ask everyone to please stand. And Commissioner Lynn Green will listen to prayer. And Commissioner Tony Brown will listen to pledge.
Father, we thank you so much for your blessings and your mercies. We thank you most of all for forgiveness of sin. Father, we pray that you'll remind us of why we're here this evening. And we pray that you'll bless us with the knowledge to do what's best for the citizens of this county in our decision making. Pray this in all your name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Place flag, attention, salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, Commissioners, we have the minutes before us. What's the pleasure of the board considering the minutes as in the packet?
Move with approval.
Okay, we have a second discussion. On favor say aye. Any opposed, like side. Okay, we have the night's agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions by staff and/or Commissioners?
Ms. Powell was unable to be here due to a Board of Health meeting. So she sends her apologies and will hopefully get on the next month or two.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we will delete item C on our appointment schedule for tonight.
Move to accept the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, on favor say aye. Any opposed, like side. Let's move to our first item on our appointment schedule tonight. We have Mr. Keller with us to talk about Helene and the Mercy Response, which has been terrific.
Yes, it is. I'm just looking for it here. It is up there. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present an update on Hurricane Helene, response and recovery efforts. Today is day 55 of the Emergency Operations Center being activated. We'll begin with a situation update as far as roads. US 221 North at Mountain Paradise Campground remains closed due to bridge outage. DOT is working on a temporary bridge solution for that location. NC 226 North, Cox's Creek, remains open. Those repairs have held. NC 226A from up through the Turkey Cove community up to Little Switzerland remains open to local traffic only with some one-lane closures due to landslides in that area. NC 80 remains open to local traffic but also one-lane closures as needed due to landslides with work continuing in those areas. Highway 70 West at Curtis Creek remains closed. Currently, NC Drive shows a January 22 timeframe for reopening for the temporary bridge. And that will be good news as that's significantly impacting not only the EMS operation but the debris operation as well as traffic for Old Fort and those industries. As far as lakes, we are working with FEMA and the US Army Corps of Engineers on debris removal from Lake Tahoma as that is a significant source of water intake for the city of Marion, or Buck Creek is rather. Lake James, those units remain offline. When I say units, the ability to draw down the lake at any given time or move water through the lake system. The first estimated time of restoration for one of the units is the end of March 2025. So any of the rain that we have through the winter will continue to spill there at Lake James. Water system in Old Fort, they're in the process of repairing the eight-inch main that was causing some pressure issues. City of Marion is reporting no issues in their water system. For utilities, no outages today. Those have been restored. Still seeing some isolated fiber and cable issues in our cell phone tower. The progress has significantly improved since the last time we were here providing an update as the fiber has come back online. We still have isolated issues. We still have a couple temporary cell trailers in place specifically on the NC 80. Corridors, the landlines with Frontier are out in that area to ensure those folks have non-abnormal service. Here is the current landslide map as of today from the USGS. In western North Carolina, there's been nearly 2,000 documented landslides. As you can see, it's heavily weighted towards the escarpment area. Next slide is documented landslides in McDowell County, that northwest section where most of our damage or heavy damages is confined to the northern and western sections. We do have scattered damages throughout the county, but our heavy impact areas are definitely north and west. Would remind anyone watching at home, the McDowell County Disaster Hotline, or those in the audience here, remains activated, 828-652-3241. That is operated 24/7. Any citizen with storm-related questions, any citizen who is needing assistance, while we may not be able to provide that assistance, our job is to connect the dots and connect the citizens to the most appropriate resource. So that is open 24/7. And we want that word to get out that we're still directing citizens to the various agencies that can assist. Some of our common calls that we're receiving, and we're averaging 40 to 50 calls a day right now, folks reporting that wells or their well is not working due to it being contaminated, it being flooded, collapsed, springs that had landslides come into the spring that need to be dug out, septic issues, the need for space heaters as we've seen the number of HVAC systems that have been damaged. People with FEMA-related questions were directed onto the Disaster Recovery Center and then folks reporting private bridges and culverts that are out. And I'll speak more to that in just a second. As I've told the Board in the past, is managing a disaster as much, there's a roadmap to follow with preparation and then response and then recovery. We're at the point, we're still have some actions and response and will continue to have response operations, but we're definitely into recovery as well. So it's a blend of those two at this point. Part of response operations involve community comfort stations when we have a significant or when there is a significant disaster, putting shower and laundry trailers in the hard impact areas. This is for people that do still do not have running water, whether it's a well issue or a spring issue. All the municipal water has been restored with the exception of a few isolated areas in Old Fort where we are providing the water buffaloes in place there. But we have two community comfort stations in place. One is in Old Fort at One Water Street with shower and laundry trailers and then at New Horizon Church, 5878 US 221 North in Marion where there's showers and laundry trailers. And you can see there's a picture of both of those on the screen. We'll continue to operate those until there's no longer a need. And those are state resource, or we request that from the state and also FEMA, so that's where those resources come from. Free medical clinics, significant amount of patients that we're seeing, the Marion Clinic, that was really a large number and really shows the need that was in that community on the north side of Marion. They saw 526 patients at the 1 on 221 North and 110 patients in the Old Fort Clinic. Both of those are now closed. Some of the common things that we're seeing were minor cuts, disaster-type injuries during cleanup process, a lot of respiratory infections, a lot of eye infections, and that can be common during cleanup operations with dust and mold and other types of ailments. So we appreciate that partnership with North Carolina Office of EMS and Health and Human Services. FEMA Disaster Recovery Centers, those are still in operation, one in Old Fort and one in Marion at the Old Fort Center, AC Bud Hogan Community Center, 909 East Main Street. The hours of operation have changed Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then on Saturday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Each day we get a report on the activity in each of these centers. Today, the Old Fort, we're notified that the Old Fort Center, that activity is significantly decreased and the DRC will be consolidated into one location starting after the Thanksgiving holiday, the Monday after Thanksgiving. And I apologize, I don't have that exact date in December. But the Old Fort Center's last day of operation will be November the 27th. And communicated with the senior center director and they'll be able to resume normal operations after Thanksgiving for the senior centers there, or the senior citizens there in Old Fort. The Marion Disaster Recovery Center will continue to operate on the hours as we just stated, 9 to 6, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, and then 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday.
What, the timeline for Marion Center, what are y'all discussing?
It's really driven by the number of intakes or folks that are showing up, just not for initial applications, but as people, they may get a request for more information, they may get a denial letter. One of the main things we're telling folks is if you get a denial letter, make sure you go back in and provide any information that wasn't provided during the initial application period. And even if you don't understand why it was denied, go back in and get folks to help you because it may be on that second application. You needed one piece of information that was left off and then the application can be approved. But it'll be driven by the usage there at the Marion Senior Center. And as a reminder, that has moved to the lower level of the Senior Center in the old DeVita dialysis building. The Emergency Operations Center, we continue to support the town of Old Fort. We continue to have an incident management team presence there. Deputy Director Presley has been assigned there in Old Fort along with another EOC staff member, and they continue to assist the mayor and the town on a daily basis. Focus remains on water repairs, sewer repairs, damage assessments, debris removal, and road repair, getting those projects ready for FEMA submission. Direct housing assistance, this is FEMA-led project. Anyone who is needing direct assistance with housing, there's various types of assistance, hotel vouchers, rental assistance, direct housing, which is a temporary structure, whether it's a mobile home or a travel trailer. Citizens have to apply for individual assistance, also known as IA. And they can go to the Disaster Recovery Center to make that application and seek that assistance. So far, there's 36 families approved. These are ones who are needing those structures, whether it's a mobile home or a temporary trailer. And more of those as they work through the process, we expect more to be approved by FEMA. EOC and VOAD, volunteer organizations assisting in disasters, is what VOAD stands for. That Coordination for Housing is led by Jerry Lewis at Grace Community Church. They are focused on emergency rapid repairs. That is to ensure that these houses, Baptist on Mission is the lead to where they go in and make sure that they get these houses safe, secure, and sanitary. A lot of times that means mucking them out, tearing out the drywall, getting them dry, getting the temporary repairs, doing as many of those as possible. That's why it's called emergency rapid repair. And then they come back and make that home complete. But during the temporary process, those folks can, once it's safe, sanitary, and secure, those folks can move back in into their home. I will mention on the direct housing piece, whether it's the mobile home or the RV trailer, FEMA's goal is to always try to get that on the citizen's own property if possible, but where there's septic and electricity, if not, move it into one of the temporary housing locations that FEMA has identified. Strong coordination with, as I said, Baptist on Mission and other faith-based charity groups that are focused on housing. When someone calls our hotline, number one, talking about housing, they're always referred to the Disaster Recovery Center to make sure they file for FEMA assistance. And then our staff will direct them to the McDowell Cares Hotline or actually fill out the application for them and refer them to Baptist on Mission. We're having a coordination meeting each week at the EOC with all of the players involved with the Rapid Rehousing Project to try to make these things as many as possible safe, sanitary, and secure. Private roads and bridges, this is a big thing. It always is after a flood. We're estimating that we have over 100 private bridges that have been destroyed. Our operations section at the EOC is going to do a more detailed assessment to get a firmer number on that. We are referring folks to FEMA. Individual assistance, again, that is where they can file for assistance, not only for the residents but for a private road and bridge that has an outage. We really need this Office of State Budget Management, OSBM State Program brought back. It was very successful during Tropical Storm Fred. We did over 64 projects with OSBM after Fred. As I said, it was extremely successful and one that worked quickly and was one of the most efficient programs that I've seen that wasn't littered with red tape. And that OSBM program can work and hopefully the state will bring that back. Debris pickup is another part of this disaster that the EOC is managing currently. The debris is being picked up on right-ofways off of state roads. As a reminder, the county elected to utilize US Army Corps of Engineers for all debris removal. The Corps of Engineers then, or contracts, in this case is Ashford, who is the contractor, and they are currently picking up debris of all types along right-ofways of state roads. Currently working in Old Fort, Cricket Creek, Marion, PG, Woodlawn, and Ashford, and will soon be moving to where we are picking up off of the right-ofways in all of the communities. So what does the future pickup look like? It will move to right-ofways for private roads and developments. That will also include gated communities. There will be a right-of-entry required. The Homeowners Association will have to sign an ROE. Or if it's a private road, the owners of that roadway will have to sign right-of-entry for the debris contractor to come through and pick up that debris. Lot of conversations around waterways. Working with FEMA at the end of last week, we will begin identifying debris that has the potential to affect or destroy critical infrastructure, that is debris in the waterways. So any type of debris that is near a private road, private bridge, state road, or any critical infrastructure that could potentially take that out in the next flood, all of these, it's the EOC's responsibility to identify these areas, then to bring in the FEMA debris teams to write the scope of work for the Army Corps to pick that debris up. That's going to be a long process. Our goal and job is to make that as efficient and make that happen as quickly as possible. But what I want folks to understand is we're working in a process. There's only so many debris trucks and certainly getting it off of the state roads is our top priority, getting it out of the town of Old Fort, getting it off of some of our other hard-impact zones is definitely where our priority is at, and then we will continue moving through all of the communities. Going back to waterways, if there's long stretches of creeks and streams and rivers that we know have been severely affected with large amount of rock deposits, erosion, debris outside of the creek banks into the flood zone. Working with Mr. Wooton, who's supported us tremendously through all of this, the different options, whether it's EWP or the Mercy Watershed.
Protection.
Protection. Mercy Watershed Protection, or EWP program, and others that are available and can come in and assist where FEMA doesn't do debris removal in the waterways. So what we want to do is identify every program possible to try to make these streams whole again and reduce the impact in years to come. And that's a significant undertaking. If anyone has looked at any of the rivers and the small streams, many of these have been decimated.
And all the things, and you touched on it, William, but the lake, of course, is full of all kinds of stuff, you know, from mobile home parts and et cetera. But then, you know, once that's cleaned up, you know, unless we can get the streams and rivers cleaned up, the upper waters, you know, will have the same thing again, you know, with the little high waters over there. That's going to be a big operation.
Yeah, and it's definitely something that we're very keen on because there's a lot of debris that is laying against, whether it's private bridges or state bridges now that has the potential of causing even further impacts. And just northwest McDowell has substantial amount of waterway debris that's got to be cleaned up.
We with the hurricane and the flooding, so you've got rivers that have changed their course of flow. So who's tasked with going in and examining those, Army Corps of Engineers maybe, and seeing, are they going to go back and shape those back in the direction they were going initially, or how, what's that process?
So rechanneled of the waterways is another discussion that we're having along with the Army Corps but also in that EWP program. But there's definitely a number of locations that have to be evaluated for rechanneled because it has the potential to create significant issues for landowners and businesses and others downstream.
And with the landslides, so will they also evaluate that to make sure that, whatever can be done to make sure that a future rain won't just bring them down further?
Yeah, so we've asked USGS to evaluate a number of slides, and that is if a homeowner has a slide on the property, the EOC can connect them to the USGS for technical assistance. That is basically just, as I said, technical assistance. The USGS does not do any physical work or bring contractors in for stabilization. It's simply giving best practice recommendation on what the landowner can do moving forward. Moving on in debris, we've got right-ofways for private roads and developments. We've talked about waterways, private property, including destroyed structures. We have trailers, we have houses that are not sitting on the correct plot of land. They have been washed downstream. There's a process that the EOC will be working with, with the landowners as well as the owner of the land who the trailer, the house is now sitting on, including the Army Corps of Engineers, to establish the process to get those structures removed. Campgrounds, we requested last week to be approved for pickup. Campgrounds can be looked at commercial property, but FEMA stated they would pick up campground debris because we have a number of small business owners in these campgrounds that are needing that assistance. Commercial property can be on a limited basis removed. Commercial property, folks can push that to the state right-ofway and that is eligible for pickup. And then we are working on a right-of-entry process for the debris contractor to enter private property. Hazard mitigation, FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management has released FEMA or a hazard mitigation project. Residents whose structures were destroyed or heavily damaged by floodwaters can apply for buyout or elevation assistance. Want to be clear, this isn't a mandatory program. This is a volunteer-type program. People apply. FEMA's not doing any mandatory buyouts and so forth. And this is strictly volunteer applications. Residents can apply, ncddps.gov/hm. This is kind of the last resort step in someone who has been completely flooded or destroyed. This is a very lengthy process as this is a federal program and is really not measured in months, can be measured in years to get that process completed. And that's something that we want to make sure folks understand is that's not something that turns very quickly, unfortunately. For the local government, the infrastructure projects that we are looking at, as hazard mitigation money will become available, are grants for generators to protect critical infrastructure. So the EOC is tasked, has been tasked with looking at what needed protection during the storm that wasn't protected by a generator. And we'll be working with the agencies to identify these projects and have those applications ready when the program is released. There's a lot going on, as you can see, not only in response. We still have EM staff and others out working these divisions, boots on the ground, working with these citizens and homeowners on a daily basis to get them assistance, get them connected to the right resources, heavily involved with Veteran Services to make sure our veterans are being taken care of. I know our staff worked with two different ones today. And then lastly, I would say, we're making sure that our emergency personnel are getting debriefings and have access to mental health services as needed. I'm reminded daily of hearing some of the stories in the situations that our folks were put in during the disaster. We are extremely blessed that we did not lose a first responder or volunteer or emergency personnel during that event. It's simply God's grace that some of the situations that folks were put in is nothing short of heroic and certainly appreciative of all of the efforts. In closing, this is a holistic approach. We've used a holistic approach for many years here to do response operations. Recovery, this is the largest recovery mission this county has ever seen. It is the largest disaster this county has ever seen. And we are absolutely committed to run, running recovery, just like response operations were ran. The expectation of our EOC staff and those on the hotline is citizens receive prompt follow-through and follow-up. I've asked them to make sure folks receive a call the same day, if not within 24 hours, and do everything possible to make sure no one falls through the cracks that caused our Emergency Operations Center. We may not can assist every single one, but we can direct them to the right resources and try to make that connection. Our commitment to the community is unwavering. I've asked my staff to make sure we continue on our long tradition of being compassionate through this disaster as there are lots of people that are still hurting and that this disaster is far from over and that our service exceeds their expectations, even when we aren't able to have the immediate fix that they're looking for, is that we do everything possible to try to link them with the right organization that can. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
One question, William, or maybe two. And you may have, you may have hit this. Power in Turkey Cove, have we got that established or are we still working?
REA is showing no outages there. There may be some outages that aren't reflected on the electric map of locations where they've got disconnect notices from building inspections or it's not safe to connect the power. If there's individual specific questions, we're happy to take a look at those.
But they have rebuilt.
That is correct.
Okay. Number two, you mentioned the generators. Do we know how many of our nursing homes or assisted living did have capability to have a generator?
Yeah, so I can't give you that number right off top, but our close coordination, just to give you an idea, like Monday before the storm, when the storm hit on Friday, we were coordinating with all of our long-term care facilities and skilled nursing facilities. Centers for Medicaid Service requires skilled facilities, which Autumn Care in Deer Park, to have generator protection. That requirement is not there for the long-term care facilities, which are your rest homes or assisted living. Some of them do have portable generators, but all of our skilled facility where there's life safety or critical medical equipment is protected by generator.
I know a lot of people in the county have been very, very grateful of your leadership of the volunteer fire departments, of the Sheriff's Department. I've heard all kinds of very positive comments about all of you, and just want to say thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that. It literally has taken everybody to get us to the point where we're at. We've still got a long ways to go.
Thank you, William, for all you did.
Okay, Ms. Keller, thank you so much for what you gave, professionalism and the preparation. I talked some other day and I said that we were very fortunate. If you lose one life, it's tragic. But I said the preparedness by our staff to go out there and notify people who were in the rejected harms way and ask them to voluntarily leave their residences to be safe, I think saved a lot of lives. And so thanks, as the Board said, thank you so much for what y'all did. Outstanding job.
And before we move on to Ms. Bunty, the slide he had about the mitigation programs, if we could just talk about just for a second. You hit the nail on the head, Will, about a buyout specifically, not so much elevation, but the buyout program is a last resort. We've had, I think, three folks that have submitted, maybe two or three. We've had, I think, three folks that have submitted, maybe two or three, an inquiry about a buyout, and Will's staff has made contact with those folks. We want to make sure that people understand their options, which it might be the rapid repair, it might be other things, but we want to make sure they have some hope. And if it's really a situation where there is no hope because of topography, the creek has moved, it can't be moved back, whatever it might be, we do want to offer that option, that last resort to folks. And that requires an assent by the board that you will allow us to participate in that. So we're asking for that, again, as a last resort for our people, not the first option. So I wanted to get that authority granted tonight.
Let's wish the board a great day.
Make a motion to approve.
Discussion, if I ever say I, I need to put it outside.
And again, worth repeating until we're blue in the face is the voluntary program. If folks do not want to participate, they don't have to. They can rebuild. Hopefully, that's the goal, but it might not be the situation for everyone. So just another tool in toolbox. But thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, William. So we're down to be on our appointment schedule tonight. We have the US Forest Service update, and we have Jennifer with us. So Jennifer, welcome to the board room, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you for having me. And I'm not sure if it included my title, but if you're expecting to see Nick Larson, I'm sorry, you get me. I'm the acting district ranger on the grandfather ranger district, just filling in for Nick as needed through the end of the year. And thank you for having me. I also want to take a second and just say thank you for the leadership, especially in this room, Mr. Kelller. I've done a lot of incident response throughout my career, and what McDowell County has done has been truly impressive and inspiring, and just incredible partnerships across the board is something that just should be recognized for our federal partner. And I don't need to reiterate any of the stats for the storm, Mr. Kelller went over that while, but just to give you an idea of what we're looking at across the National Forest in North Carolina, and especially on the grandfather ranger district, we estimate about 190,000 acres of blowdown across Pisgah National Forest, which is just under the size of my entire district. So if you put it all in one spot, it would cover the grandfather districts, which is, I just learned, 24% of your county. So just to give you an idea of what we're looking at managing, in terms of damage on the district, we have sort of been resting on the number of 70%. So 70% of roads, 70% of trails, 70% of our infrastructure and our ecosystems experiencing, and that's the severe or catastrophic damage category. So it's a monumental undertaking, which I know you all are familiar with, with everything you've been doing on the county side. But it's not hopeless. We are working really hard to get our priorities in order. We're working with our partners. We've started bringing them in to help us do assessments. We're working through that assessment process still, as we start moving into the repair process. We did just reopen seven roads, which I know doesn't sound like a lot, but I reminded my team this morning that on Friday, we opened seven roads and think about the immense amount of work it had to get, just to get those safe and assured that they were safe for people to actually use them. And we'll be doing sort of a rolling reopening of roads and trails, so we have another set that we are expecting to open this Friday, including close to or a little over 30 miles of trails, which we're really excited about because we know how critical that is to local citizens and also to visitors and tourism and everything that comes along with the values that we try to provide through the US Forest Service. In terms of McDowell County, as we're developing those priorities, we've been working, Mr. Root and Mr. Kelller, to think through what will be safe to open and what we need to open to sort of ease some of those tensions in other places. And right now, our priorities are the gateway trails near Old Fort. If you haven't been down there, there's quite a bit of damage, including a bridge that's still there, but facing the wrong way, and a little outside of where it's supposed to be on the river. We're also looking at Catawba Falls. We're pushing through a contract to get some of that damage repaired and get it reopened as soon as possible. And I'm not sure if you saw, but the grand staircase at Catawba still stands somehow, barely even had a branch laying on it, so we're really grateful for that. We're also working through the process to allow timber salvage. It'll be near roadsides through the national forest. We also have a letter, I believe, coming out as I'm speaking, to allow firewood collection, which will be important, especially going into the colder months for local folks, so they will be able to do that without a permit. And then we are also working really closely with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, figuring out what, there was quite a bit of damage to Armstrong Fish Hatchery, which is one of our permittees, and we are working with them to ensure that our trout populations are thriving as much as they can be. And I know that's a very quick, very broad overview, but I'm happy to take questions or...
Okay, comments, questions?
Concerns.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Jennifer, have a good evening. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Let's move to our next item on our appointment schedule. This is our DSS update, and we have our DSS director with us. So Bobby, come on up.
I'm actually going to introduce Patrick Betancourt from Macon County.
Good to have you here tonight.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. My name is Patrick Betancourt. I serve as the Department of Social Services Director in Macon County, as Bobby mentioned. Mr. Manager, I also have the pleasure of serving on the VA Health Board with you, and glad to see you. I'm coming to you this evening to present your Social Services Director with a pretty prestigious award, and if you'll bear me some time, I'd like to kind of explain a little bit about why she's receiving this award. Bobby has participated in a process known as the Directors Academy. So in addition to serving as the Social Services Director in Macon County, I also serve on a committee for the North Carolina Association for County Directors of Social Services. That committee is called the Professional Capacity and Personnel Committee. And in that committee, we run a program referred to as the Directors Academy. It is a self-guided, self-paced, experiential learning program. It's designed to enhance the knowledge and critical decision-making skills for directors of any tenure. It's intended to be completed within about 36 months. I'll tell you that Bobby did it in 12, and she would have been finished sooner if the learning opportunities that she needed to complete the program had been offered a little bit more frequently. The Directors Academy is composed of six core training focus areas. One, human resources management, budget and fiscal management, leadership and program administration, working with governing boards, media relations, social media for the DSS agency, and then finally legislative advocacy. So each of those six core training focus areas or modules contain a curriculum that are comprised of both required and a minimum number of recommended components, with some of the modules containing a very large number of recommended components, from which the participant can choose. Required components are often key training areas within each of the modules offered by organizations like North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, or other affiliated state human services agencies like UNC School of Government. The recommended components are self-selected. There are curated lists based on the module's subject matter, so for instance, if you're working in the leadership module, you might be able to select a leadership text from an author such as Patrick Lencioni or something like that. In addition to the curriculum, mentors are assigned to Director Academy participants, and I had the fortune of serving as Bobby's mentor during this process. Mentors get to serve as sounding boards and advisors, providing support and ongoing learning. And having served as Bobby's mentor, I can tell you that the support that was provided actually kind of turned into a two-way street. I found myself kind of running some needed information through her, and she was able to give me some feedback as well. At the completion of the participants, at the completion of each module, the participant provides the mentor an overview of what it was that they reviewed and what they learned in both the recommended and the required resources. Feedback is given by the mentor, and these discussions typically focus on application of the material that the participant learned, and how does that actually relate to what they do in their real-world work. And then finally, once the participant has completed each of the six modules and reviewed the modules with their mentor, the participant then has to do probably what's the most grueling part of the Directors Academy, and that is present to a review panel of their peers, as well as guest directors who can observe. And this final presentation allows the association to give feedback to the director on their public speaking, and that's probably one area that trips up a lot of our participants. So that's a little bit about the Directors Academy, but let me tell you a little bit more about Bobby Sigmund. During the time that she worked on the Directors Academy, Bobby proved herself to be a driven achiever. I mentioned to you that it's supposed to be done in 36 months. Bobby made sure to have it done in a much shorter timeframe, 12 months. And again, would have been done sooner, except that she didn't get to participate in some of the activities because they didn't come around frequently enough. Bobby participates fully in discussions, and she's not shy to speak her experiences to larger groups. That took me about three or four years to get comfortable to do, and I'm still not very comfortable doing it, but Bobby doesn't have any struggles in that area. She not only accepts feedback well, but she's also willing to reverse roles and provide guidance. A lot of times, again, I mentioned this earlier, some of the times we'd be talking by phone after one of her modules, I found myself asking her for guidance or ideas on how she might handle a situation, and she was happy to engage in those kinds of conversations. Bobby fully utilizes her past child welfare experiences, and she applies critical thinking skills to all areas of the social services work. She's demonstrated that throughout this Directors Academy, but she's also demonstrated it in committee meetings, as well as meetings with directors of social services across North Carolina. And I'll wrap it up by telling you that every single DSS director has a story to share about some critical issue that they had to deal with within days or weeks of coming into their appointment. And usually, directors kind of share this experience as a way of saying why the Directors Academy might be something that's not quite their top priority, or why they choose to not even participate at all. Bobby didn't. Bobby did the exact opposite. She shared a critical issue that she had to deal with upon being appointed, and she said, as a result of having to deal with that critical issue, she wanted to make it a point to complete this, I think she maybe even said something crazy like, "I want to do this in six months." I think my response was, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, let's see what we can get done first." But she was, in fact, driven during the entire process, again, completing it in only 12 months. And so it is, without any hesitation, and it's my full honor, to present Bobby with this small token of her achievement for participation in the Directors Academy through the North Carolina Association of County Directors of Social Services. Bobby, congratulations. Good job.
Bobby, congratulations on your Directors Academy completion, and I know you worked hard on it, so good job, and that knowledge will be used, I'm sure, to help make you a better director of McDowell County. So thank you so much for completing that and your hard work. And Patrick, thank you for your involvement too, sir.
Yes, Ms. Jennifer.
Thank you for those kind words, Patrick. That's really special because I tried to work as fast and as tedious as I can and get the work done, because I wanted to learn as much about this job as fast as possible, but also be as beneficial to McDowell County as possible. So I'm going to go into the MOU data now, and so our child welfare assessments right now, we're bouncing back from September, as that was a lower month due to the storm, as we know. So our data, our numbers are going back up, and so we will bounce back up from that number. We know that our screening percentage is hovering right around that 80% mark, 81%. We have seen 98% of our kids, which we like that. We are hovering around 20% for permanency within 12 months.
What's the statewide average on that in 12 months?
Right at 20, I just talked to the state rep about that, right before I came to this meeting, actually. The national average was at 35%, and the state average, I think she told me, was right at 20, she said between 26 and 28 is what, she was going to give me a number on that, though. And that's why I was questioning if the federal average was at 36%, 35 or 36%, I think it was, and our state average was between 26 and 28. Why are we aiming at 40%? Didn't make a lot of sense to me, and I was questioning that. So that's something she was actually going to follow up on with me. So because we were going over all of our data, we did have a child come into re-enter foster care, and that's why we were at the 14.3% for entering foster care. Again, we have a very small percentage, so if we have one or two children that re-enter foster care, and there's 13 or 14 that have went home in that time period, in that year time period that they're examining, and again, the data point we're looking at for these numbers was from September 1st of 2021 to October, I think it was October the 1st of So when we're looking at this data point, or I may have, wait a minute, September the, yeah, that's right. So when we're looking at this data point, if we have those children that go home, but one of them re-enters, that's going to, because you have now one out of 14 children that went home, and there was 14 children that went home during that time period, but one, I think one child re-entered, that's automatically going to move our data point up. Or one, two children that re-enter, that's automatically going to move our data point up. So because we have such a small population.
Just one quick question while you're there. If you can remember off the top of your head, I don't know, from the time that that child was placed back in the home until it re-entered foster care, do you remember what that time period was?
No, because I don't even know which child it was.
Okay.
I just had the numbers. I would have to look back to see what child that was.
Could you get that for me?
Uh-huh. Yep. You want to know how long was that child in the home?
When it went back into the home, how long it was before it returned to foster care?
Yes. I can pull that report, and it will tell me that information.
Okay.
I just have to identify the child first. I just had the numbers earlier today. So that's where we were at. At the end of the month of October, we were at 87 children. However, I can tell you in November, that number will significantly increase, just for the simple fact that we've already filed some, several petitions this month, so. APS or Adult Services, we seem to be cruising right along. We're still about at 50 cap cases. S A in-home, we're right at 39. Guardianship cases, we're hovering right around 53. We're staying right around where we normally are, between 50, 56, somewhere in there. So we're not going anywhere with those. We had about four outreaches. September is when we spiked a little bit on the outreaches with 12, but we went right back down in October. So we are reaching out in adult services this month because we do have those two openings. So we are reaching out in Adult Services this month because we do have those two openings right now for adult specialists, which is who investigates our facilities and does those follow-up visits. So we are reaching out. I have reached out to Vanguard to see if they can help us out with that, if they have anyone. And we're reaching out to our state people as well to see what we can do, and we're trying to get those positions filled.
Bobby, about staffing, how many positions are we down at DSS?
We are down...
I know it's highly competitive, and the Department of Social Services have a hard time retaining.
Down 12 vacancies. And we have one conditional officer that office, offer that just came back, though. So that's now, we should be getting a start date on her soon. So that will no longer be a conditional. And then I'm putting in paperwork probably tomorrow for about, one, two, three, four of these positions that's on my desk that they just submitted. But they won't start till after the new year, January 1st. So that's kind of where we're at with those. And some of those are, three of those are Medicaid positions, one of those is going to be a social work position, and possibly another social work position.
How are you in CPS unit?
I have three social work vacancies and a supervisor vacancy in that unit. And then I have one supervisor on medical leave and my program manager is on medical Child support, again, we're saying, right, well, we need to with numbers slowly meeting our goals. They had eight applications and we had 95 in court this month. Energy, we had 75 applications in October. Energy is going to start ramping up December the 1st, though. That's when that really ramps up and opens up. So we're getting ready to meet, to start that program and talk about that program and how we're going to handle the volume for that. So that will be on our next, actually, we're going to meet this week for that. So that will be next on our agenda.
Let me go back to the staffing question just a second. CPS supervisor?
We had one to retire.
Okay. And how long has that position been open?
She retired October the 31st.
Okay.
Was her last day. Work first, they've had six applications, and they've had some energy applications, but they're meeting their goals as well. Food and nutrition, that's what I really want to talk about. They are still, they're not working recertifications at this moment in time. However, they are getting quite a few applications. About 330 of those were regular food nutrition applications. I want to get to the DSNAP, so if you'll flip with me to your last page, which is the As with any natural disaster, we have the option to run a DSNAP program. The DSNAP program runs for seven consecutive days. In our case, it ran for eight consecutive days because we felt like that there was more people out there that we could reach. So several of the counties, all the counties had the option to run an extra day. Five of the counties chose to run that extra day to reach more people. During those eight days, McDowell County in person reached 2,070 people, where we actually had face-to-face contact with those people, either giving them the card from their online application or telephone application, or actually seeing them key in their application and doing their in-person application ourselves. And so I want to point out that we also continued, when we ended on those eight days, there were still 790 applications in our queue from the state that were still people that had applied online. And it was confusing to them possibly that they did not have to come in in person or call the call center, or they could not get through to the call center to finish their application. So along with us and other counties, we began to call all of those people. And we were not the only county. So all the 25 counties that were declared disaster counties had people in that queue. There were over 19,000 people in that queue that had to be called. So we called all of those people along with all the rest of these counties in North Carolina and processed those applications. So we ended up having 2,442 applications approved for McDowell County and distributed $1.5 million here in DSNAP dollars, just here in McDowell County.
Make sure to tell your staff we appreciate their hard work because I know they worked the eight straight days. And hearing the stories, I'm sure as they take an application, they heard stories too of what the people went through. So definitely tell your staff the board appreciates their hard work in trying to help people and get food, I mean, during a critical situation or time.
Absolutely. They worked, many of our staff worked 12-hour days, many days, and so they worked straight through from that Monday. They worked, most of them worked two weeks straight, pretty much, straight through. Dare County assisted us by processing applications. Surrey and Cumberland County processed food nutrition applications for us to run this DSNAP. Guilford and Iredale processed Medicaid applications so our staff could come to the YMCA and help run this DSNAP. Cumberland sent their director here to make sure that we had the right DSNAP application because we knew we were the right setup because we knew we were going to be inspected by the USDA. Dare processed DSNAP applications off the queue for us. Polk County also made their director available to come here if needed. Guilford, Yackton, Dare, Alexander, Sampson, and New Hanover also processed the apps from the online queue for us as well, which we greatly appreciate. All those counties, it took every county that we have to come together to get those 19,000 people plus served. So we're very appreciative of them. And so I want to say that my staff handled it like a, I mean, it took, we had this DSNAP operation along, we had over 40 people working it, 40 staff members just working this DSNAP operation because it took all of that and more. We had staff members up at the top of the hill at the Y driving people down in wheelchairs, bringing them back up in wheelchairs. We had people outside standing all day long. We had people that were there all day long processing applications. I took applications. I've never taken a DSNAP application before, but I learned real quick. And we had people that had to be with those cards 24/7. We had USDA that followed us back to the office to see where cards were locked. Everything, we had interpreters on site. But we got many compliments from the USDA about how our operation was ran. We had compliments from the community about how fast we got people in and out. We had people lined up at times, and we still got them in and out in 30 minutes.
That's great. Also, we need to thank the YMCA for owning their facilities to allow this program to be housed there to assist the people.
One other thing that I think we forget about is all the local volunteers that kicked in and done so much. You know, we had people, a lot of people that were really affected themselves, and William knows this, by the storm, were yet still out trying to help others and trying to help...
Absolutely. William and his EOC staff, they came out and set the YMCA up for us, helped break it down. They were there each day making sure everything was okay. They helped supply the EMS, the medical crew we had to have on site, as well as security that we had to have on site as well. They made sure we had everything, water, all of that stuff that we had to have. So that was amazing as well. We couldn't have done it without that because we had to have, the list of things that we had to have to run this was a page long and more. So very, very much appreciated as a partnership there as well.
Okay. Any other comments or questions concerning Bobby and the information that we've got?
Thank you, Bobby.
Okay. Bobby, thanks so much, and you have a great day. Congratulations on finishing the program too.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Let's move to item A under old business, Mr. Woodin. This is our strategic plan, sir. Please have on this.
Thank you. We have probably, gosh, about a year ago, you started this process in this room. And as we talked about in the intervening months, you had a team mostly of county department leaders but others helping to formulate what you see before you. We had intentions of having this before you last month before the storm, and so we just deferred it until tonight to focus more on Helene response. So what you have before you was, I believe, what was presented most recently in September meeting. We did share it widely on our website. We shared it with some key partners like the school system and college and others. And so as far as staff is concerned, I believe it's ready to adopt. And we don't believe in putting things in stone. If you'd like to amend it as we go over time, you can do that.
I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt it as presented.
Okay, a motion of second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye in opposed light side. Move to item B under old business. This is our water project update. Mr. Woodin, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I did defer update on this last month, too, again, just to de-clog the agenda. But no action on this one, but a lot of activity. Our Phase 1 project is essentially complete. We have done some activation there on the lines you see before you. Same for Hoppy Tom, it's more or less complete as well. And again, there's some difference between some of our projects and others. Hoppy Tom involves actual plumbing connections to some of the residents because of grant funds being available. So that plumbing is happening, well, not right now, but over the next few days. So a great success on that one as well. Phase 2A and 2B, essentially Phase 2, since it's the same contractor, that work is underway. You may see it out along Wildlife Road and a few other places. You might also see, I've mentioned this as well on 70, on the, I guess, the west side of Beaman Road, there is some construction happening around the side of the road. That is where the master meter will be moved. And so from the point closer to town on will be the city system, and from the master meter on, starting there at Beaman, will be the county system. So we're picking up a little over a mile of line, and we'll, as part of this project, construct a new line on Beaman Road where there's been city water for maybe close to 80 years. And they have a two-inch line and no hydrants, and so that line will be replaced as part of this project. And so that master meter, we're scheduling that switch over on January 2nd, so after Christmas, after Thanksgiving, after New Year. So hopefully we'll miss all the holidays and have that change over. So after that point, all those folks will be county customers.
What's total number of customers the county has now in the water system?
Right now, about 370 or so. The section that we're picking up from the city is about, only about 25 or so. And then as these phases are coming along, people are tying on. After all said and done, from really the RPA-funded projects on the NIVO side of things, we'll think we'll have close to 500 customers. The biggest one probably in one fell swoop is going to be the East End Project, which is primarily around the Marion Lake Club area. We are having a challenging time, I'll say, with the state getting that through permitting. So we're just waiting on them. If that's not moving soon, we'll go higher up essentially. I'll say in their defense, though, that the staff are very overwhelmed with the amount of projects, and then you add a hurricane on top of it, and it doesn't help. And then we do have the small project around Exit 90 that is in design. So as far as the area serving West Marion Elementary, I get a weekly update from our engineer. They had to stop a little bit around Helene, but they are back on track with the design. And so they're doing probably some survey work. If you go along that stretch of Sugar Hill Road, you'll probably see some survey stakes and things. So that is underway. Gladly take any questions.
Okay. Their meeting now, let's move to item A under new business. Actually, go to item C under old business, employee leave policy. Okay, Mr. Woodin, go ahead, sir.
Right. This was an item that was brought forth a couple of months ago where it was being discussed. And I think two months ago, you directed staff to essentially, you know, just bring back a draft policy. And so that's what you have before you. We'll give credit where it's due. We did reach out to local employers, especially on the public side. And what you see before you is a close mirror image to the McDowell Tech policy. As I mentioned before, all state agencies implemented a parental leave policy, gosh, maybe about nine months ago with SB 20, bless you. And so the various state agencies were allowed to, within statute and state law, implement a leave that fit their situation with some guardrails. And so again, we took their policy and prepared it for your review. So again, what the state mandated through the state statute for full-time employees, and this also has part-time, so this is again, very little change from what was already out there. You had to have to be working for the state for 12 consecutive months. We kept that consistent in our policy for the actual leave itself. For a mother that is giving birth, you have a certain amount of time versus a parent that is adopting a child. So if a mother would, under this policy, receive eight weeks of paid leave and four weeks of paid leave for parents otherwise that are in adoption or any other qualifying event, which is by this, the addition of a family member to a child.
And that money actually would already be budgeted when the budget's adopted in July. So if we have a mother who would need to take advantage of this, that weeks of paid leave is already budgeted correct?
That's right. What you would see, any sort of leave change, and we touched on this with the Helene, the disaster leave last month, it really defers other leave that could be taken or not. So a mother in this situation is given eight weeks paid leave. A lot of our employees that are in taking maternity leave, a lot of them have, if they've been here a while, they've earned some amount of leave. It's usually vacation or sick leave or whatever they can accumulate over time. They're usually taking eight weeks.
And remind us how there's a time accumulate for an employee?
Say, for vacation, you're earning, to start off, it's a little less than a day a month. And for sick, you're earning a day a month to start off with. And that rate accumulates as you're there.
Are there some guidelines on the age of an adopted?
It's below 18.
Below 18 years of age.
Yes, sir. So there was a discussion, I think, too, and again, this is, we're just follow the state. There was a discussion, I, I think, last month of maybe restricting that age.
A parent would necessarily need, uh, eight weeks, uh, time off, uh, adopting a fifteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old.
That could be. There might be some situations that require some, some amount of, you know, you know, changing of certain situations with school or something else.
Yeah, because that child is gonna be in school.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, once you're bringing this tonight, that would be, uh, would be voting yes on that as well.
That's an option. Any of this is all for your, your editing, your review?
I'd like to table it for thirty days to review a little bit more because of some of the wording in this to be able to talk about.
Is that a motion?
I have that's a motion. Table it for thirty days.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Okay, it will be tabled for thirty days. Let's move to item C under new business, item A under new business, farmland preservation grant.
Thank you, um, several months ago, you authorized the submission of a, uh, grant to the North Carolina Department of Agriculture to pay for, uh, the preparation of a, uh, farmland preservation plan. And so, um, the grant was awarded, uh, right before the storm, right in the midst of it. Uh, interesting timing. We did receive, uh, that grant contract as well as a proposal from Foothills Regional Commission who would actually do the plan. So you have both contracts in your packet. Uh, everything would be, uh, paid for by the grant except for a small matching amount, I believe it's twenty-five hundred dollars that you've previously authorized.
Move, we approve the grant and the contract. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, like aye. Okay, let's go to item B, this will be board appointments. Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, ma'am, would you lead out on this for us?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, you've got your memo before you showing a few committee openings and boards, um, which we'll continue to advertise for. Um, but there's two applications submitted for persons under the age of twenty-one and they want to, um, serve for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. They both attend McDowell High School. They attended their September meeting and they were recommended by a couple of the council members for y'all to approve.
Is this the first ring or second ring?
Uh, this is more than second.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll move, we accept.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, like aye. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Uh, thank you.
Let's move to item C, uh, this will be budget reports, Mr. Wooton.
Thank you, um, you have the property tax, uh, collection report in front of you as well as the sales tax. Um, I, I will point out the sales tax, I guess, is the action item. Um, we're, we're starting to see statewide, not just here, a little bit of a dip, um, in the trend on, uh, sales tax collection. So we'll, uh, you'll see that on, uh, the September remittance, uh, where it was, uh, quite a bit below, uh, the month before. So for the August remittance, we had, uh, for article, I'll just focus on one, Article Thirty-nine, the first one, a little over four hundred and seventy thousand, uh, remitted and for September, four hundred and twenty. And that was consistent across almost the entire state. Uh, and so not, there's really not a good explanation other than maybe, uh, pull back on spending, of course. Uh, we have anticipation that the, uh, the report for October sales will come after Christmas. Uh, but we have some anticipation that will be lower than it would have been otherwise because of the, uh, the storm affecting many of our stores and, uh, eating establishments. So it'll be hard to tell if we're already seeing a trend, if there's any, uh, any dip related to, uh, the storm, but I would not be shocked. You do not have the TDA report, uh, it might be in your other packet you received, but, um, we anticipate mixed news on that for the month of October as well. Many of our hotels that were not damaged in the storm have pretty good occupancy uh, due to, um, responders. Uh, but many of our Airbnb's are in areas where they had issues. So again, a mixed bag there. Uh, but as far as the budget report itself, uh, there are some action items. Uh, you have budget amendments, uh, GF two through six. Then you have, uh, budget, project budget ordinance amendment for American Rescue Plan Fifteen, a closeout resolution for Stacy Hill Road Waterline Project and a project budget ordinance for the Fontiflora Trail Project, which is in Old Forts.
Okay, what's question of the board?
Move, we approve the budget matters. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, like aye. Okay. Let's go to item D under new business, this is administrative items. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir, let's see.
There are quite a few and I'll read them all off like I did the last item. Um, if you'd like, uh, do it all in one fell swoop. Uh, for EMS write-offs, you see these every month. Um, twenty-six thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents requested write-off. There are two leak requests for, uh, the Nevo system. Uh, for transit, there's a Title VI plan in your packet, uh, you've had and, uh, the director's asked for you to approve it. It's a, a typical template plan, uh, that we update every three or four years. Uh, there's a, a typical, uh, item in your packet, uh, a grant from the nine-one-one board. Uh, Mr. Keller has, uh, submitted application for a board for, uh, radio consoles. So that is in your packet. Uh, Mr. Keller has also asked for, uh, a propane tank to be donated, uh, no cost to the Dyersville Fire Department. And Mr. Keller again has asked for, uh, the purchase of six cardiac monitors. Uh, we're proposing to finance those. Uh, that, that cost is three hundred and seventy-two thousand and one dollar uh, for four years at a rate at four point one-five percent.
Okay, comments, questions?
Makes a motion to accept administrative reports as presented.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, like aye. Okay, let's move to item E under new business, this is our tax matters, Mr. Wooton, sir, go ahead, lead the sound.
Thank you, um, I actually put a cover memo in, uh, this one this time. I don't always do that since it's pretty straightforward. Uh, you do have your typical releases, refunds, rebills and a few discoveries. I'll also mention, um, we had started a staff and you've been made aware of this, of course, that, uh, counties, especially on a four-year reappraisal schedule, have to, um, almost start planning the next reappraisal after you've complete one. And so, um, we have been, uh, working on that, uh, process, uh, really for about six or so months. Staff has, um, trying to lay the groundwork for that. Uh, in order to have a good quality reappraisal, what we would recommend is that pretty soon and maybe as soon as the December meeting that you, uh, engage a company to get started on that. So we'll be in, in communication. Again, I've spoken with, uh, all of you about what that process would look like and, um, so wanted to get that out there, uh, to you as a reminder. This is part of the, part of the process for making sure we have good quality, uh, tax records. And so I'll talk more in detail about this at the next meeting.
Okay, uh, comments, questions? Now, we have the next item on our.
We do, uh, need the approval of the tax matters.
Yes, right. Questions of the board?
Some of it. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, like aye. Move to sit to comment. Uh, do we have anyone that is, uh, attorney's gone, second?
I'll note, I think mostly, you know, he had to go to the planning board meeting at this time.
Okay, uh, let's move to commissioners of the staff and reports, communications. You think we have staff members and new commissioners?
I do want to mention that, uh, there was a, a civic leader, Bobby Young, passed away this past week.
Really?
And, uh, just wanted to, uh, say she was a great, uh, great individual and a great, uh, civil servant and served on a lot of different, uh, boards, but, uh, we're gonna miss her.
Yeah, she, I remember Patrick years ago, when they had the, uh, office supply store on Main Street, we always bought supplies for you.
Yep, yep.
Thank you for acknowledging that too.
And her services are tomorrow, if you have ability and interest.
Okay. All right, at this time, we have a closed session on the agenda pursuant to NC General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight point eleven eight four. Uh, do we declare, just, do we need a motion?
A motion.
I'm not sure if you want to go into closed session.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like aye. Okay, all right. After a brief, uh, closed session, uh, no action was taken. Uh, do I hear a motion adjourned?
Somebody.
Do we need to come out of closed session?
I want to make a motion.
Oh, shoot, fire. Motion to come out of closed session?
I second that.
Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
I, I make a motion to adjourn.
Aye, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.